All right. You will stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to your Republic for which it stands, one nation, united ground, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everybody. Can I get a motion for the approval of tonight's?
Oh, yes.
Oh, yep, we got a call.
Mr. Cardy.
Here.
Mr. Sins.
Here.
Mr. Terry.
Here.
Mr. Daly.
Here.
Ms. Ferguson, here.
Mr. Reed.
Here.
Mr. Rucker.
Here.
Now, I would like to get a motion for the approval of tonight's, uh, tonight's agenda.
Motion to approve that. Mr. Sins.
Yes.
Mr. Terry.
Yes.
Mr. Daly.
Yes.
Ms. Ferguson, yes.
Yes.
Mr. Reed.
Yes.
Mr. Rucker.
Yes.
All right, moving to old business, we have the second reading of Resolution Zero Five Twenty Twenty Three, authorizing a pre-annexation agreement with Wilcox Investment Group. Can I get in motion?
Motion to approve Resolution Zero Five Twenty Twenty Three.
Mr. Sins.
Yes.
Mr. Terry.
Yes.
Mr. Daly.
Yes.
Ms. Ferguson, yes.
Yes.
Mr. Reed.
Yes.
Mr. Rucker.
Yes.
All right, moving out of old business, we have no new business, we do have discussion items. And first, discussion item is Uptown Master Plan Update.
Hello, sir.
Thank you.
Excuse me while I figure this. Okay, good, I got it right. Good evening. Y'all can make it here this evening, tonight's a whole full house, gee whiz. My name is, I'm sorry.
Could you repeat your name, please?
I was just ready to say it. My name is Kim Littleton, I'm with O H M Advisors.
Okay, thank you.
Uh huh. Seen familiar faces here over the past year or so, working on zoning growth, this. One of the things I think it would be quite prudent to do tonight is, if you all haven't had a chance to read the document, or even perused through it or look at it, is this give you an overview of what process we went through to arrive at a plan for Uptown, and then also what some of the recommendations are for it, and how we structured that in the plan, and some things to look out for when you're reviewing it. I'm gonna cover four different things this evening, and I'll try to do them, and respect your time here, in about twenty, fifteen, twenty minutes, so if you have some questions, you can throw them at me, as you will. Begin with, the plan approach that we took had five steps, and over this past year, we, the first step was a logical step that we typically do on a planning exercise, is to investigate, which is gather this information. Second one is to really get to know the community as well as we can, and have public meetings and public sessions, and review with the groups we're working with, like the steering committee. And then we start going in the process of creating a, with that response and that input, creating a plan that has two major components to it. One, a vision, goals, and some objectives of how to reach that vision, and then also some priority projects that we feel the community could implement over the next five, ten, fifteen years, to jumpstart development in the community. And that's not just private investment, it's also public investment. And we know you're making some public investments, streetscape improvements right now, but this will be in conjunction with some of the private investment, and we're showing how some sites, prime sites for redevelopment could occur in the future. Now, keep in mind that this is a plan, a policy plan, it is not a binding document, so it isn't the community saying to the rest of the property owners and residents and everything that what is recommended here is going to happen. Plans in communities like Ohio and other parts of the country are there as documents to set policy for the community. In fact, it's a, it's a way of getting things lined up on your capital improvements program, it gives you some things to pick from. If you didn't have that, then you'd be flying blind as to, well, the most popular project comes in, but it isn't necessarily the most logical one.
Mr. Wellington, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I had this question, and then mulling over.
Yeah.
Would you say this is more of a concept document than an actual implementation plan?
Well, there are steps at the rear, at the back of it, that take the goals and objectives, and also include action steps with the timeframe and responsibility for that. So if you go to the back, there's a, I'll go over in a minute, an implementation toolkit that recommends the timeframes in the short, medium, and long term, and then all of the actors that could possibly be involved in those different steps. So it suggests, I don't get to in a minute, some things like, you know, getting, getting a group organized that advertising and promotes the downtown, just one specific group, if it's not a business improvement type of group, it's another merchant type of group, that kind of thing. So I'll show you that in a minute, but that's, that's the implementation phase, that basically says, here's some of the things you need to do to implement not only the capital, the improvement projects, the priority projects, but also some of the soft things to do that would involve, you know, the staff in the community, or even residents in the community to promote some of the businesses.
Okay.
So the framework itself is made up of a vision, a series of goals, and within those goals, a series of objectives. And to get to that vision, we involved the public in three different ways. One was a survey that we did at the front end of the project. The second one was a series of stakeholder meetings that we had with people who are property owners and investors in the downtown, and then a series of steering committees, we had five of them. Following that, we did our homework, and basically tried to understand the community and the place, and then we identified some best practices, we, those things that could be done, the examples from local communities, as well as examples from other parts of the country. The document itself has seven different sections to it. First is the introduction, just gets into basically what the plan is about, who is involved, the timeline. The second one looks at the history of the down, the uptown area, what previous plans have been prepared, like the comprehensive plan, and what's recommendations that are relevant to this plan. Then there's uptown today, and that's what we really get at, taking kind of a snapshot of the uptown area, including existing conditions, that's physical conditions, the demographics, and some of the trends that are affecting the community. And then we got the community views, which is, you know, there's a section in there in the plan, that goes through all the responses we got from the survey, we also did a series of pop-ups in the uptown area at different events, and got input from the priority projects from there. Then we have the uptown vision, which is just a statement, and I'll get you that in a minute, that pulls together some of the results that we got from working with the public, and then the priority projects, there's, I'll describe those in some detail, and then the implementation toolkit, which I, as I mentioned, has action steps, people are involved in it, the partners, and the timeframes for implementation. The uptown vision comes from, and basically a vision is defined as a desired outcome expressed in simple terms. It's really saying that rather than leaving it all open to everybody's concept of what could be done, it's trying to consolidate all those ideas into one vision. The goals are the statement of purpose, and followed by that, the objectives, which get in more detail, it just kind of goes from a, is that shown, a funnel type of thing to you get in more detail, the point of the funnel. So the uptown vision, and this could be reworded in any way you wanted to, it's just a start, is the heart of the Plain City Uptown will serve as a center for arts, culture, shopping, recreating, and entertainment, with a well-balanced mix of uses, variety of mobility options, and strategically located public gathering places. They'll make the uptown economically, culturally, and socially vibrant. So that kind of, you know, pulls everything in a nutshell, pulls it together in one statement. It's not meant to be memorized, it's just meant to be referred to once in a while to be sure you're on the right course. The goal that we set up, and what we set up for each one of these goals, and as an example of one, one part of the toolkit, is to create a diverse and vital economy. You can see from that, let's have it pointed around, no. You can see from the first goal, that we have a series of objectives, three in this case, and then we also identify some key outcomes. What outcomes or indicators could we use to determine what progress we're making? And some of those included here are increase in the number of businesses, and we threw a number out there that you could work toward, maybe you don't, but it's a yardstick to measure your progress. So that's, that gets down into not only what the goals and objectives are, and the underneath the objectives, the action steps, but also a way of measuring your progress. So that gives you the structure, and if you were looking at the plan itself toward the end, that's where the toolkit is located. As far as the priority projects are concerned, we worked with the steering committee in selecting sites that would involve not only, would involve both public present investment and private investment. And we had approximately six different either sites or locations, that involved maybe one, more than one parcel, where we recommended that some projects could be started in the near future, some of them already, some areas and parts of those are already being developed. The first is housing at the elementary school, we recommended that, we had some other alternatives with it. We recommended that, we had three different concepts that we floated with the community, and they gave us some input on. And all of these were involved in the pop-up sessions, and an opportunity to vote on those, and the results of that are in the plan as well. We had the housing connections to the southwest Plain City, and that's that area in the goal that you see, which is B. Then it's, then at the intersection of Chillicothe and Streets, and, excuse me, Main and Chillicothe, we showed both public and private investment, in fact, there's some going on right now there, which is great to see, even while we were reviewing the plan, somebody had bought a building, was, is really rehabbing a heck out of it. And then there's a Main Street Streetscape Improvements that are going on right now, and we know there's gonna be some more going up Chillicothe Streets, Street, and potentially it could move further to the east to complete the Streetscape Improvements. Then we have the potential for service and structured parking additions, that would be further, actually between the school site and the, the intersection of Main and Chillicothe. And then the Heritage Trail Connection. Well, we're showing that because the, it's, one of the things that was discussed while we were working with the steering committee is that this could be a destination for more than just people driving from out of town. With that Heritage Trail just at your doorstep, to the south and east of here, it presents a really good opportunity to be the head of the trail that starts in Hilliard, and there are a lot of people that use that. We found as we went through the process and talked to some people in the community, they're, they're out there with their kids and using that trail all the time. The key is, and I'll point this out as we go through it, is to create a safe connection between where it terminates right now and the downtown, because there's great opportunities for accommodating their needs. And I understand it's possible that we could take, the trail could be connected and taken further west, north and west, to the community and out that direction. Housing at the elementary school is just an idea of a mixed-use opportunity, we threw three different options out, including this one. This just reutilizes the school, provides additional parking, and throws some housing in the neighborhood. There are other ones where we showed the potential of setting back the school, putting a public space in there, redeveloping the site for more mixed-use development, like office space and some residential, but that's one of the items in there. In the plan, it shows all three concepts. In this one, we're showing housing, and these, these sites are some of the similar ones that were in the comp plan, so they're not too different from the recommendation there, they're just in more detail, and we changed the configuration slightly. But the idea here is to show how you could incorporate things like live-work units in the neighborhood, and also multifamily housing and townhomes, that would be adjacent to areas that could potentially develop in the future. So it's, it's an area where you could expand the uptown, and not impact the existing neighborhoods so significantly. Then there's the intersection of Main and Chillicothe, and I'll show you an updated diagram from this, but this is our first initial drawing of it. But it shows you how the intersection can be improved, both in the Streetscape sense, and both as providing more public space in the downtown at a key location. Now, I'll get into this in a little more minute, but the, there's nothing wrong with a, with an obtuse intersection, or an angled intersection, as opposed to a four-way. And one of the reasons is because when people approach intersection like this, they slow down. There's such a thing as, that's what's it called, risk, well, anyway, homesteasis, and what it is, is people will enter under risk level based on their comfort, and if they perceive something as being risky, in the case of driving, they'll slow down. So the risk situation comes in, this is not a normal intersection, it's even more abnormal now, because it was designed for truck traffic. There's hardly any curb there, especially on the north, the northeast quadrant, to guide any traffic through. That doesn't mean there has to be a curb, it seems to be working, but that space could be better utilized for something else, if not public space, then for private development. Then you have the piece of the south, that's another opportunity to get traffic aligned better, and to take it from its days when it was a truck route, to the day when it could be a focal point for the community. And then the concepts overall for that intersection, we went in a little more detail, and identified how it could be improved, and still keep some of the features that are already there. And one of the, one of the things we wanted to do in the image number two, was to retain the Christmas tree, and we know that's an important part of the community, and that's a vital, an area in which you have a limited amount of space to do your activity at Christmas time and any other time. So we incorporated a plaza space that links to the existing building area in there, and at the same time, we, there's an existing drive-through that we incorporated along with the development. So we're not eliminating the drive-through, we're leaving the possibility for that to stay open. If it changes in the future, that's fine, it's not used, that's fine, it could be converted to public space, but allows the traffic to be more directly aligned, there's crossings, mid-block, and at the intersection, they're pulled back right now, and I'll show you a picture of what it looks like right now. If you see the before, and we took the, just so you could see the image, we took the telephone poles and wires out, so the before isn't really the before, it's before, but it's an ideal before. We've shown this as an extremely wide intersection, and it creates a lot of problems with people crossing here, because it's a long time to get across there. The same is true of the northern lane. So we reduced the crossing distance for that roadway, increased the amount of, of public space on the sidewalk, still left, the tree is a focal point, and one of the drawings on, we have it here, yeah, you can see where in that particular case, and we've shown in slide, in the image number six, that we provided bike facilities for the trailhead, an opportunity for people to, you know, stop there, go to a restaurant, just hang out, you have a concert that could occur there. And we wanted to do a night, a snow scene, but that was gonna take a lot more work, but it would be a neat spot for, for doing the Christmas tree celebration, too. And on the other plaza to the north, we kind of raised it a little bit, because we had a plaza raise situation there, and provided retail frontage there, and it's more, this is more contemporary retail frontage, it's not like what you have in existing buildings, where they're deep retail buildings, they're limited in how functional they are, this is a little more, has more glazing, or more window space, so it gives you opportunity to do traditional retail in that location. Now, it could be one-story, two-story, three-story, it really doesn't matter, as long as it infringes and closes the plaza space. And then there's the Main Street Improvements, this is what's going on right now, and this could carry on later on down Main Street at one sixty-one, with the same type of sidewalk, brick pavers and a curb walk, and, and the concrete pavement and plantings. And then there's a potential for doing service and structured parking in parts of the town, just one site that could do it, only because the sites are big enough that we could easily combine them, and allow you to develop them. One, this is a site to the north, where you have a mixed-use development, it's basically hiding a parking deck, and the deck is only one, actually two levels, a ground level and upper level, so it'd stay behind the building, but it's still allowing the opportunity to create additional parking, and then the opportunity for a mixed-use building to the south. So these are, these, this could happen in several other locations in the uptown, but the ideal situation is to have the parking to, to basically serve as anchor. So you have parking on one side, that's an anchor, parking on the other side of Main Street, further across, on the east side of Chillicothe. So when people go to park, then it's like a mall, they're driving, going past the uses to get to the other side, and then they end up going back to the parking garage. So you place parking as an anchor, as opposed to just randomly putting it anywhere, and that's the reason we had it in this location. And then there's the Heritage Trail Connection, and this is a, this is abbreviation of what, what we've been discussing, because it also goes down into the quarry and across that bridge, the old railroad bridge. There's many options we discussed, which included, you know, going around the quarry, going through the quarry, and I know that has yet to be resolved, but we felt that the village had more control over what to do in the back streets, as you get up to the uptown area. Rather than running down Chillicothe, we felt it was probably safer to go through the neighborhood and put in bike sharers that would give people direction, sometimes they give people a false sense of safety, but at least they make drivers aware of the fact that this is also a shared space with, with bicyclists. So it's, and it's continuation of the path, it gives you a chance to sign a thing that says Heritage Trail, direction uptown, entertainment, you know, dining, and that kind of thing. So the implementation toolkit is, is basically a matrix that takes the goals and objectives that I showed you before, and the action steps, and expands that to include those that could seem to be responsible for implementation, the timeframe it would be done, which project that we've been working on would be part of that implementation, and then any reference information we could give you to come, to look at, to further describe what was going on. And then you see to the left, that's a list of the different partners that we identified that could possibly be involved in implementing the plan. This is not an exhaustive list of everybody, but you'll find that it'll take just about that many organizations, over a long, long period of time, five, ten-plus years, to work through the planning of the downtown, until you get to the point where, yeah, I think we've, there's never gonna be an end to it, but there's gonna be a point at which you'll, you'll start seeing a level of activity that's different than what you're having now. As you improve, as the retail spaces expand, as you get more housing in particular in the downtown, adjacent to the downtown, that is a key element that's brought up in the plan, having the right density of housing, and the right type of housing, was, and particularly a part of a mixed-use component, is really important. So some key takeaways, or I call it the seven habits of a highly successful uptown, begin with a long-term vision, and I think we have that. It's something that takes you into the future, gives you something to hang on to, it's, it's one which is uniquely tailored to the uptown, because of its, you know, unique characteristics. Second, make sure that village staff plays a key role in uptown improvements. I'm not trying to put everything on the village staff, but it's really important that they're involved as we go, as you go through this process, because they're, they touch every single button, as far as things happen. They start with, you know, the zoning and, and title and approval process, all the way through to actually issuing the building permit, and there's a lot of pain and suffering in between that, for people that are trying to do investments in the downtown. I'm not saying it's horrible experience, but it's one of those ones where if one or two people are marshalling it, and it goes through, it's great, it's like an ombudsman for downtown development. The third one, encourage public-private partnerships, and you've done some of those, and it's great to see, I think it's, it's the way to get things done, is when people will feel the most confident in the success, and it's one of those things where you're not pitting the private sector with the public sector. Then there's applying patience and commitment to a long-term process. Give you an example of one that was really long-term, but I think in the Columbus area that worked out pretty well. Back in the mid-eighties, Batel, the Batel Organization, was sued, because they were spending their profits, and they weren't supposed to. They were supposed to retain their profits within their organization, that was part of the charter that Batel left. So the Attorney General of the State of Ohio sued Batel, and won an eighty million dollars settlement from Batel. What Batel had to do was to take eighty million dollars and invest it in Columbus, and so they did, they invested in roof and front improvements, but the biggest investment was adding more housing to the Thai Village area and the area by the Batel complex facilities, and property that they owned, they owned dozens of acres around that area, they were basically landlords for a lot of the properties. That created the, the population that you needed to start the gallery district that eventually might form naturally in the first floor, because the rents had gone so low, it was affordable for someone to come in and do a retail space. And that's getting to be a common thing in revitalization in districts, because you just want the space occupied, it doesn't have to be anything temporary, just occupy it, get activity around it, people see that there's something in there, and then it'll serve a purpose or something else in the future, and that's what's happened. As time went on, we got more people in the, in the Village area and around the short north, those restaurants started turning, those galleries started turning into restaurants, and the housing moved into the short north, and we got the cap, and made a connection to the downtown, the convention center, and that took forty years. So people had to stay with it, they stuck with it, and it was quite an improvement. I don't know if you've been down there in the past, you know, year or so, but it is, you know, it's been written up in national magazines, and it's been one of those focal places in Columbus. And every town that has a street that becomes the, the main street, like you have, the street, really all is, all you need is to create an identity for the community, that one street, and that's the case all over the country. You know, in, where they have the, the Mardi Gras in Louisiana, there's one main street that that is on, where all the parades are at. You can think of a dozen cities that have main streets that become the identity part of the community. So that's the important thing, is to give it that identity. The way to do that is to prioritize a walkable, compact, mixed-use development in that area. And within Phil and the short north, that's just what they did. They already had the bones, and you have the bones, that's the street network, and the block sizes, and, and the access right now, that's a great thing to have, you don't have to invent it. The second thing is employ quality place making, and that is the idea of taking what's unique of character about a community and pulling it through, and making it a major feature of a development in the downtown. An example would be, and it's not, it's not a genius thing, but having a Christmas tree in that site adds some continuity to the site. It says, hey, an activity occurred here, it's important, let's celebrate, and have something around it. And then build on uptown's assets, and that's, you know, finding the strengths in the uptown and building on them. There's certainly a number of them, we pointed them out in the plan, and they're great opportunities to do that. And I guess this probably sums it up better than I could, and sums up what I just said in the seven habits, and this was a, a survey that responded, I don't know, just kind of wrapped it all in a nutshell, we thought, and that's why we decided to highlight it and put it in the plan. Any questions, for anyone?
Yeah. Is, I note the one area that you had more modern shops, if you know, is consistency in architecture in that area important, and, and, because that doesn't look consistent with the architecture that exists out in the uptown area.
That's right. It, it doesn't, we showed something, it was more the building form, and we were concerned about the details of the building. But we did show these. But we did show the use of brick material. We did show the storefront effect on it. The idea is that if you're going to build a building today, it's very difficult to replicate these buildings. And in some cases, you really don't want to because there's more space on the lower floor. They're deep. The high ceilings are nice, but they're really high. And that's not only the first floor, but the upper floors too. So if you were to do new buildings there, I wouldn't replicate what you have here, but I would replicate the form that's up close to the street. Yes. Yeah. You could do, you know, you could do, we have the opportunity for doing canopies and things like that in the front of the building. Start giving it dimension with canopies, and you could have, the signage would be probably consistent with the other signage in the downtown. You could, downtown Worthington, right? You've been there before, right? And then you'll be on the green, south of the green, and you have where the greater's area is around Worthington. That's just a one-story block building back there. It's nothing fancy, and there's parking in the front. But it still fits with the historic character, the New England feeling that you have when you're in, in Worthington. So that's an example of that. So the parking lot, we've got an open space.
Now, one more question.
Sure.
We bandied about the idea of having a community improvement corporation.
Yes.
In our village. Do you think that has a role?
Yes.
As we go forward with this, and what would it do? I mean, how would it enhance?
Well, one of the things a CIP does is it, it creates an arms-length organization. The city doesn't have to, my understanding, its indebtedness isn't tied to it. In other words, your bond rating for selling things isn't affected by the CIC and vice versa. So the CIC can do its own financing. So it's, it's kind of an arms-length relationship. The second one that is, then that means they can have a closer relationship with other partners investing in what they want to do. And their, part of their project can be investment in the downtown. It can be investment anywhere in the community. Yes, industrial parks.
Would you say that could be, could be an important?
Yes. Yeah, particularly the recommendations we have for the private development in that area.
One other question. Dublin, I think, I'm sorry. No, no. Dublin, I think, has taken an approach, they developed their plan a long time ago, and they pretty much, I think, stuck to it. Even if a, a, a money-digged developer comes in and wants to do something different, it's not about the money for Dublin. It's about their plan. And they reject those things even though the money would be outstandingly good for the community. They stick with their plan, and I think it benefits them. Is that your understanding there, or would that be something we should do? Is kind of be careful about accepting financially beneficial offers for the village, which violate the plan or our concept, cultural vision?
I think it's, it's, it's a good idea to stick with the vision. I think the, the main reason for that is it, it makes it fair for everybody in the uptown. In other words, if you apply the same standards to Fred on one parcel or one building that he owns, and then you go about, you know, doing something different for the second building down and so on and so forth. And it's not based on some vision or some principle of how you develop or whatever, that agreed on one. And then people start going, hey, why did he get to do this when that guy got to do that? So it levels a playing field, and it gives you a chance to be able to start doing things with your regulations and your code to be more consistent with the uptown. So, yeah, I agree. You don't want it, I worked as a planner in the city of Dublin 20-some years ago. And I remember when the uptown, the core, the High Street, 160, you have a High Street, 161, it's like that. Kind of on the opposite end of the area. But that area, that, that never, it's kind of interesting historically how, as a village, it stayed that way forever and never got the mercantile Victorian buildings like you have. It always stayed low cottage-level type buildings. But they were able to increase the density without impacting the scale so much.
In their plan.
In their plan, and that was the goal.
One more question before I get thrown out of the room. Your plan includes some concepts that, for which there are significant obstacles to getting there. Two examples. One is the elementary school. And the one where it shows Lovejoy's Plaza moved forward to the curb. I'm not sure why those are in there because those probably can never happen the way in real, in, in, in real life. Like, actually, it has a, has a parking area in front of the building, and your concept drawing, your picture, shows parking in the back. And the, and the building moved way close to the curb. So that's, that's probably not going to happen. The elementary school is, as far as I know, a big question mark. It's undecided what's going to happen.
Right, right.
So that was just a thought and an idea of a possible use for. Okay, and, and I'm really curious about how, if we, if it was possible even to do what's in the drawing, how, how would the village control that? Because that seems like the project that would be in the hands of private developers for the most part. How could the village impact what is actually going to be on that site?
Well, it's, first of all, we're working on the code, and the core area has specific regulations for how to deal with infill redevelopment. And it also has design standards for that. So it will prescribe what could happen. One of the things in the, in the code, one of the things, the reason for where that, the building shifts from having the back to the front is because it is contributing to the streetscape and the building placements you have through most of the uptown. It's built, putting the building forward. And there's a lot of reasons for doing that. One of them is you take parking and you make it subliminal to the space. In other words, you don't have to go from the sidewalk through a parking lot to get to the use. So pulling the building forward, and that's something you have already that was done, you know, 150 years ago. That is also a mixed-use building. It's not just a one-story retail building. So it has more intensity than what's there. It also gives you the chance to increase the amount of parking you have in the rear and not make it a, an eyesore. You know, parking garages are hard things to make look nice.
I understand what you're saying. It's just, the problem is, is getting over the hump.
Yes.
Well, a more bigger question then is that, is the, what is it, the northeast corner of Main and Chillicothe? Where you're suggesting a plaza area? Okay, so the village doesn't own any of that land or any of that property as far as I know.
Right.
So how do we, how do we make that a plaza?
Well, most of it's right away from my understanding.
It's the right way.
Yeah.
It's the street.
Yeah, it is.
I mean, on the right way, but we don't own the land to build a, build a plaza.
No, the plaza, so the way that looked to me, if you go back to that, that, I, I, it's actually a pretty good-looking idea. I mean, you'd have to get over, it's basically.
I love the idea.
You wouldn't be able to go straight.
I've been doing it for a long time, but.
Yeah, you wouldn't be able to go straight. You would just take that street and pave it or, I guess, brick it and make it, you know.
Yeah, if you looked at the diagram of it, though, it removes buildings that are there.
That's right.
The H R building.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, you're on the other side.
I'm sorry, I'm shooting at the person, sure.
Yeah, the opposite corner. How do we get control of that and make it happen that way?
Okay, so one of the things you mentioned, public and private development. You gotta, you gotta work as a partnership.
Right.
If that's how plazas like that, something downtown could get done, we need to work together with the businesses down there, and then you work out an agreement. So that, that plaza would enhance whoever owns those buildings next to it.
Correct.
They would work out some partnership. They would work with the city, with the city at that point, and we could build it at that point. That's, one of the things that I saw when I read through this was that was a thread that went through everything. The private and public, the working as a partnership.
Right, correct.
Because some things, you know, the things can't be just public, and other things can be private, but there's certain things that we'll have to come together to get things done.
Right. Okay, so you're saying we can't do that without a private partner then?
Yeah, you would have to have someone who was willing to work with the, work with the village.
I don't know. It's my question, you know.
Yeah.
Again, it's entirely, I totally 100% support it. Something like Marysville has the Memorial Plaza up there is of great use for that property. I just don't know how to make it happen. Maybe our new development manager can figure it out. That would be a good project. Would you like me to address this, or I don't want to take into?
Yeah, sure.
No, the, just to read to your, to your question. This all would involve public-private partnerships, probably through a CIC as well. Just as a scenario, if, if, if those buildings become available, say the owner's ready to retire and move to Florida and they're looking to sell the property, that would be an opportunity for us as the village to swoop in and buy that property. Okay, or one of the buildings or all the buildings.
Sure.
And then our role would basically be to advertise that we have this property available for some type of redevelopment. So we would send out like an RFP or something like that to developers and basically let them kind of guide and direct what happens on that site with our guidance through this plan. So we would basically tell them, this is our vision. Can they, as, as the private sector, make this happen? What would the finances look like? How would we structure everything through a CIC or the county or whatever? And then that's how these projects happen. So it would be similar with even the Lovejoy Plaza, you know. If, if that became available, the village could, you know, potentially purchase it, have a developer demolish it, and then rebuild the building.
Or the CIC could undertake that project.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it.
I mean, would it be fair to say that the owner of the property may also like the vision and be willing to do something with that as well?
Yeah, of course, of course.
It doesn't, it, it doesn't have to be done exactly that way. But the concept is to have a public space in frame by mixed-use buildings. And that's key because the rest of your town has a series of mixed-use buildings, and we're trying to model that on this site. So that's the critical part of it. How that mixed-use building turns out, what it looks like. We've given one idea of a kind of simple concept. There is examples of buildings like that in Columbus and German Village where they have some very serious design guides. They have the German Village Commission to reduce the project, where they took a contemporary building, but they built it out of the brick. They respected the, the window proportions. They, they made it a point to, to recess the windows to make it look like it was structural brick. They did a lot of detail work to make it look like a building that was a contemporary version, not all of the detail that you see in an older building, but it had the same proportions and the same form as those buildings, and it fit right in with the thing. There's several examples of that in, in German Village and other parts of Columbus where they've done that, and they fit really well.
And that's all backed up by their code, I believe.
Yes, it is.
It demands that it be done.
Yeah.
And they don't compromise with the developer and kind of turn it loose to just build a building there.
No, they, they have a long history going way, way back of, of, and, and, you know, some of their properties are on the national, the whole district is a national register district, so they have a lot of leverage in that respect. So, and there are people that benefit from it. The tax consequences, the credits that you get for, for historic preservation are really a good inducement.
Thank you.
I, I would just like to add to that point, too. We, we want to work with developers who bring something like this to the table. I don't think anybody's really, you know, expecting to have a glass cube, you know, modernist-type building, you know, built in the uptown area. But we would work directly with that developer to make sure that these projects are exactly what we want as far as design and things like that. We're, we're beyond the point of recreating the historic 1890s-type buildings, but as long as they're still consistent with the era or the, not even the era, but just the district as a whole, that's going to be our goal moving forward. You know, one of the things about the uptown district is, is we have lost a lot of the historic character in the last few years of the uptown. So Mr. Hutchinson and I have really been working on how do we, how do we protect and preserve what we still have left while also enhancing the new development we know is coming? So really, we make this, this uptown district something that, that can survive the next 150 years. You know, we want to make sure that through design, through, gosh, even traffic flows and the social environment that we build, that this remains the, the key point of Plain City as all recent residents come in. So we didn't take any of this lightly. There's a lot of really good thought and discussion that went into this, and we're, we're really excited to, to get this going, so.
I appreciate that viewpoint, Jason. I've said many times that the one thing that Plain City has to sell is its culture that will make us a go-to destination. If we lose that image and that experience that people can have coming to Plain City, then we're, then we're really working hard to be average, just an average town. We want to be special, and the only thing that can make us special is that culture and that architecture and that environment that. And that's been like you. I'm, I'm not sure, I know there's people who share it, but I don't have any. Thank you.
I think we have explored a CID in the past, gosh, that's been like four years ago, I want to say, that we talked about it, and is that something that you're, you would encourage for that uptown revitalization to help with, so this project?
Yeah, we, you know, CIDs are great. That's a special improvement district. We also have downtown improvement districts. They're all basically the same things. We, we even have the opportunity to do a TIF in the uptown district. So what, what we might run into a little bit of struggle here specifically in Plain City is that we would have to have a very large district to generate the type of revenues that would really make sense for the uptown. So we would just have to, to do a lot of research and figure out what exactly we want that to fund and then see if we can spread it a little bit without having, you know, a handful of building owners pay a lot of taxes. So that's something I, I believe is actually in the recommendations in this, just looking at CIDs and downtown districts.
So where are we with this plan now? Is it, is it in a, in a stage of process or to, to reaching an end point?
Yeah, so this is, tonight is pretty much the, I guess, the heralding of, of the beginning of the plan. But I will say that I'm just making comments here or taking notes. When we're looking at the priority projects, there's six priority projects. We're already working on five of them. So we're already well underway. We have shown this to a few residents and, and business owners and even a couple of developers, and response has been very positive. So I, I think that we're going to hit the ground running. Keep in mind, as Kim mentioned, you know, it's going to take a lot of time to, to get this going. A lot of money, a lot of energy, a lot of staff time, and there's a lot of partnerships that need to be formed. I do give a lot of credit to UPCO because they kind of started this whole thing. I remember with my previous position, working with UPCO, I think in 2009, you know, on somewhere planning and things like this. So to get to the point where we have this plan now, we actually have conceptual designs. It's really exciting. But we, we will get there. We are excited to begin work. I think we'll, we'll have a very bright future in the uptown, so.
Any other questions? I, I think, you know, however you want to treat this, you know, a lot of communities go through the process of adopting plans. They go through a formal one, and they legislate, and this is the plan. Other ones draft and order. It's a resolution that accepts the plan, so there's different ways. You can spend how much teeth you want to put on it. Adopting it makes it an official document like all your others. A resolution just basically states, yeah, we recognize this, we resolve that this is part of the community that's going to be followed in the future, so. But that would be, as far as council's involvement, the, the next step in the process. And I think, you know, Haley, we talked about this, is, is probably a logical one. And, and it gives, you know, it, it, like I said, it gives legitimacy to it more than anything else. And it gives the, you know, the weight of the councils behind it, and the committee understands that. And you can, you can use that day to go out and start negotiating your brains out. Well, thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity to come out here and sell the plan. And I'll be watching you because I live up in Delaware and come through here all the time. So we'll, we'll be around. Don't have to worry about it. We still have some streetscape to finish, too, don't we? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilton.
Sure, thank you.
All right, moving on to our next discussion items, or item, cybersecurity and ethics training opportunities. Just to be cognizant of everybody's time tonight, this is just something that has come up in my thought process in interacting with folks around the village on Friday for the, for the coffee with councilmen, things that have come up in the forums. And often we hear, you know, a sentiment as if there is unethical things happening, right? And I think that it would be prudent from a, from a village council perspective and also from a village administration, administration perspective for there to be a formalized process, maybe yearly, maybe every other year. For sure, onboarding new council, new council members, new mayor, new staff, that there is a, a process to go through, ethics training for everyone. That's a requirement. And then maybe refreshers, you know, over the years. Because there are things, as a state, you know, as, as part of the state of Ohio, there's an Ethics Commission, and there are things that we need. And there are things that we need to know that as residents coming in as council members, we may not understand those things. We go through sunshine law training, so we know about documentation. But we don't necessarily understand what does it mean to go and have somebody buy me coffee? Or for me to go buy somebody coffee? Is that a, you know, is there, is there the potential to have, to do something unethical? Because I don't even know, you know? And so that, I'm required at my, my day job to do that, to have that ethics training. And I just thought it would be something, I, I don't know how we enact that, whether that's a, an ordinance, whether that's a policy, whatever. So it's really just an, an item for discussion. And then the second part of that, which is loosely connected, but also cy- cybersecurity. We are all familiar, I'm sure, with what happened recently in Hilliard. Having our village staff go through some regular cybersecurity trainings and even understanding how to do this, you know, business continuity. How do we, how do we handle ourselves as a village if we get hit with a cyber event, a ransomware attack? What are, what, what procedure do we follow? And we may already have this, so that's why I just don't know why we're bringing it up. And then knowing, don't click on any links in any emails or any texts, ever. And, and just reinforcing that and having practice discussions about the policies that we have in place for, for, you know, for writing checks or getting information or delivering information to parties that ask. Because the, uh, the number one issue is human error. And then, you know, and as we learned recently, and as I learned recently in a, in a security training, we don't have to be the fastest person to, to, when we're running from the bear. We just have to be faster than the slower person. Because if our defenses and our practices that we put in place are strong enough to slow someone down, they'll move on to an easier target. And I would like us not to be an easier target, so. Open for discussion.
I was asked about if, if council members and if our committee members can sign. And I am trying to blank on like what, what type of a document where, you know, if there is any, um, conflicts of interest. And that's something I have asked, like, that, so that way we can all like put it out on a piece of paper and say, well, I, you know, carry, I'm a business owner or, you know, I serve, um, on this organization or something that like it checks us against each other. So, you know, that we, we're just at the forefront.
I think, so again, I would lean on legal councils a little bit on this. But I would separate the conversation between higher employees of the village and elected employees of the village. The higher employees, the professionals, I would assume, and I agree with Mr. Sen, that they should have some formal training process, uh, including ethics that we require to take and whatever a normal village or city would take. From an elected official, it's certainly a best practice. I, I know that we went to an O H M, uh, training. But I would wonder if because we're personally responsible, if I commit a ethics violation, the village is not liable, I'm looking at my legal, as much as, as, as long as it's not like, like they're not the ones like encouraging it, I'm liable. So I, I would think, and again, I'm looking at my legal. But I would think the answer would be something of mandatory, highly recommended. Do, if you, if you don't want to, I don't think we can require an elected official to go through these. I certainly recommend it. I did it. But I think we should think about training separately a little bit so that like, because technically if I commit a fraud, I'm liable, not the village. But if Renee commits fraud, the village is liable.
We had this same discussion about six years ago about.
Yeah, it's, it's a, this is a, this is a recommended, highly recommended conduct. This is a required conduct, so I think any training program.
And, and I will, I'll say this though, though you, though we are, though we are personally liable, we also have the, you know, the public opinion where we soil the image of the village by us doing something unethical.
The, the reason I, 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 again, best practice and I think it's good. But if I tell Ms. Ferguson to take the training, she wasn't to train, take the training, I can't fire her. And I also can't be held responsible if she breaks that law.
But the risk here, Michael, I fully support. I'm not sure you can mandate a behavior for a council.
That's what I'm saying. I don't think, I don't think you can.
But if you committed an ethics violation, you're accountable to the state of law, ethics commission, right?
Absolutely.
You will be, if it's egregious enough, you will be brought up and, and prosecuted.
Speaking of the Ohio Ethics Commission.
I lived through the ethics training. I lived through an ethics training. I'm not saying we shouldn't do it. I'm saying.
Somebody said you, you wanted to take it twice, what was that?
I'm a failure. I'm just saying that I, I think we need to be careful.
Yeah.
When you set up this program between what you can mandate, what you can't.
Between the village and council.
Yeah.
And that's why, and that's why I wanted to bring that forward discussion. Because I didn't know what is the best way to go about this, how, do, how do we separate it? How do we go? And I know that the Ohio Ethics Commission does have a free training. It takes about an hour. And it's, it's a wonderful training.
For employees, the best part, place to include is by the employee handbook, which we update every year as a policy. We include our things already, like, you know, if you have to do a P P E training or something, it's included and you sign up. And then currently we suggest that employees do, um, the sunshine law training. So this would be another great, you know, your first week onboarding, your additional training that will help you in your career. So having to include that as a policy and it's like, it is required for my job though.
The village is liable.
We'll actually do two weeks for it, so, yeah, to our course. She's mad at us because they won't be, that's why.
Yeah.
She probably come here to do it.
She probably would.
We had the people, maybe, yeah, that other organizations involved.
Absolutely.
She's got her, what's your?
But I appreciate, like, that's something that, you know, I, I understand, like, yes, like, I see where you're coming from. It's like we should put our best foot forward and, and do that. I see, also see your point where you can't ma- make it mandatory.
I, I'm more, I'm more thinking of the like, when we write a policy, let's make sure we write a policy that we can enforce and is, you know, keeps the village as liable or not liable as possible. So again, I'm happy to take the training. I'm happy to do all these things. But I'm not saying that to Mr. Reed's point, we have to hold ourselves to a higher level again, we can get punished. But that's different than village, right? The village could write a policy, say, I have to take an ethics training, I'll have to repeat. It could say, I, if any policy says I recommend you take a mixture insurer, but.
And, and maybe that's, maybe as from a, even onboarding new council, new mayor, maybe that's something that there is a list that, that is generated. Here are the recommended things that really you should be doing in your first week.
Absolutely.
So you may not know that there's an Ohio Ethics Commission website that you can take.
So Haley, you said that the staff, the people that you think need ethics training, get ethics training on the sunshine laws and et cetera?
We did the specific Ohio sunshine law training, um, usually the first week that someone starts at the village. Um, but it's not mandated or anything, um, but it, it just sets a good precedent for people. It doesn't include the ethics and the, I think it includes cybersecurity, so just adding those on probably be appropriate.
Yeah, um, I think it would probably be important to make sure that, as somebody suggested, that significant layers, uh, at high levels get that training. I mean, there's a reason why the fiscal officer gets that training. She's exposed, uh, to mistakes and they don't count as mistakes. They count as ethics violations. So, uh, to the extent that you can make that happen, it wouldn't be a bad thing. I'll just, I'll just say that. About that as far as council, council, we can decide if we want to have an ethics review. Perhaps administration could find a online webinar that we could sit through and, and just review. Oh, oh, Mr. Sen's just had us to pull one up.
I mean, it's, it's, it's there. It's, it's out there.
Yeah, okay, something like that, definitely a suggestion. I just want to get closure on this for, for, for the administration and council.
Can you send it out to us?
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay.
I also think public records training would also be a phenomenal course to take because what's public record?
And that's part of the sunshine law, right?
For the sunshine, yes, yep.
And then as far as cybersecurity, it's a little bit different because sure, there's things that can come up and make you liable, but there's also just things you can do that are dumb that, uh, that's probably not the proper word to use in a council meeting, but, uh, that are not wise to do and click on that can compromise your own system and then compromise the system at work. And less of a requirement or just, we probably ought to find some resources that are regularly, we're regularly reminded because the, the situation in that space is constantly changing and is constantly escalating.
You don't take that for you. My work makes me take a longer research.
Yeah, that's, that's good for you if you want to give a overview of that course. That would be good.
But that's still.
I think it's because of village computers, you have to, you know, really need.
Yeah, that one would be avoided. That's why we're not on that record. Oh, but you know that, you're right.
So for example, ev- it seems like every couple of months, like it, something like will fish through my email and I'll send it out to staff members and say, I need your help. I will not ever send, and if I'm not using exclamation points or something, it's not me. I get so many messages saying.
Now they know.
Yeah, I know, no, now it's out there.
Delete all of them.
So what are we gonna do about cybersecurity training? I endorse that idea and you can't get enough of it because as Mr. Sen says, it's constantly changing. The minute you know something this week, next week, you have another, another thing.
May I recommend, may I recommend that as part of the handbook update, we send this to personal finance. It's, it seems to be right up personal finance alley here. It's in the handbook, it's ethics training, it's all those things. We recommend the Shiyama, um, you know, what, they'll all have input from their jobs to what should be required and shouldn't. And then when the employee handbook is updated, bring it to council, let the council just approve just the, you kind of update handbook as opposed to the whole process.
And Ms. Wilton and I spoke earlier, uh, that there may be some resources available, uh, in that space from the, uh, from Department of Administrative Services, D A S, may have some resources available, so.
So what are we gonna do?
Dig it up here?
Yeah, yeah, uh, they're going to put that over on personnel and they're gonna come up.
The handbook will be reviewed by personal finance and then submitted to the council to approve, just like any other.
And in the meantime, we'll look for resources that we can own.
And you can take ethics training though, the course required, so feel free to.
Ethics.ohio.gov. Enjoy. That's.
Motion to adjourn.
Yes, motion to adjourn.
All right.
All right, all in favor, huh? Thanks, everybody.